America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Roll call, one absent. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Breyer.
I move that the absent council member be excused.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the absent council member be excused. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a proclamation. This is Fire Prevention Week, Chief Peterson, I believe. Yeah, excuse me, and Madam Clerk will read the proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas the City of Renton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and a fire department responds to a home fire every 85 seconds, and whereas fire departments responded to 1.4 million fires nationwide last year, and whereas last year 13,910 civilians suffered injuries in home fires nationwide, and 84% of all fire deaths occur in the home, and whereas fire is a large contributor to property damage and loss with over 11.7 billion in damage last year, and whereas the needless loss of lives and property as a result of fire could be significantly reduced with working smoke alarms, practicing home fire escape plans, and eliminating fire risks in the home, and whereas the Fire Prevention Week 2012 theme "Have Two Ways Out" is designed to help motivate residents to take personal responsibility for making their homes safe from fire. Now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of October 7th through 13th, 2012, to be Fire Prevention Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I've here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 8th day of October 2012. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council concur in the proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, Chief Peterson, up to accept this.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mark Peterson, Fire Chief of the Fire Emergency Services Department. I'd like to introduce to you a couple of gentlemen here who work tirelessly every day to ensure that our community is safe from fire. Assistant Fire Marshal David Pargas and our lead fire inspector Ted Hickey. Ted's been involved with our department's fire prevention program with a lot of education, the Juvenile Fire Center Program. He's really been involved in a lot of the fire prevention aspects. And Dave here has been involved in a lot of our new construction, making sure that our codes are up to date. Again, part of our fire prevention effort. But I think what's important here is you heard a lot of statistics being raised in the proclamation, the amount of damage in the billions of dollars across this country every year. And so, a lot of this are preventable incidents. But I think, to make it really simple, everyone should have a home fire escape plan, but more importantly, they should practice that home fire escape plan. They should maintain your smoke detectors, changing the batteries twice a year when you change your clocks. But something more important is, every once in a while, take that smoke detector down and vacuum it and clean it out, blow all the dust out of it, make sure that it's working, test it, make sure it works properly. And finally, make fire safety a habit. Just, it's a part of your daily routine, and you'll be richly rewarded for that. So, thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a special presentation, Greg Zimmerman.
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. My name is Greg Zimmerman. I'm the City of Renton's Public Works Administrator, and it's my pleasure today to present to you the Public Works Department Employees of the Year. Whoops. There we go. Sorry. Every year, the Employee Recognition Team for the Public Works Department... Okay, how... We're doing it, okay. I thought it was me, but I... That seems to be better. Thank you. Every year, the Employee Recognition Team from the Public Works Department, which is made up of representatives from the department's three divisions, meet to select three employees of the year, one from each of the Public Works three divisions. The Employee Recognition Team also selects a project and its participants for the Good Teamwork Award. So, we have a Good Teamwork Award as well today. Nominees for these awards are submitted by coworkers. So, they fill out a form and they recognize the good work done by the folks that are working with them on these different projects and then submit it. And then, it's the job of the Employee Recognition Team to select from all of those good applicants, the Employees of the Year and the teamwork project. So, I'd like to take a moment before we actually recognize the winners of this year's award to thank the Employee Recognition Committee member, team members, that make this all work and also plan our annual Employee Recognition Picnic, which we have every September. Gary Del Rosario, Jason Grant, Keith Woolley, and Committee Chair Linda Muscetti helped with the selection and putting together the picnic and arranging for the awards. So, thank you all for assisting. Council Chair Zwicker, or Council President, I'm sorry, if you could come to the podium, we'll present the award winners at this time.
And friends and family can feel free to come up if they'd like to take photos.
And at the end of this, we'll have a group photo as well, so you can get your picture with the council members. First, from the Maintenance Services Division, our Employee of the Year is Oscar Cantu. Oscar, if you'd please come up to the podium.
There you go.
Just hang in here for a second. Oscar's in the process of retiring from the city after 33 years of tremendous service that he's provided as the wastewater and surface water lift station technician. A lot of people don't think too much about wastewater lift stations, but they do recognize it when the lift stations aren't working. Thanks to Oscar, that doesn't happen very often over the years. I'd like to read what the nominating coworkers had to say about Oscar, and then we'll present him with his award. Oscar is by far one of the most dedicated loyal employees that the City of Renton has. I've worked with Oscar for 23 years, and over these years, Oscar's been instrumental in assisting the city engineers and contractors in improving the designs of both the surface water and wastewater lift stations. Oscar has trained coworkers on the cleaning and minor maintenance of the stations. Oscar literally likes to take care of his babies, gotta like a lift station if they're your babies, as he refers to the lift stations. Oscar's worked countless hours to ensure the stations are always operating properly 24 hours a day and seven days a week, and that means a lot of night call-outs, too. We have the telemetry system and he's there on the spot if one of the stations needs work. Oscar works well with the departments in the city and is well-respected, not only within the city but also in the private sector. Oscar can always be counted on to respond day or night, on weekends and on holidays, when there is trouble with the stations. So, thank you once again, Oscar, for all of your good work for 33 years.
Thank you so much for your service.
So, if you just want to stick here for a minute, we'll do photos in a minute. Okay. Our second departmental employee of the year is Juliana Frye from the Transportation Systems Division. Juliana is a registered professional engineer and serves as our transportation program coordinator. Among the others things she spearheads submitting grants for transportation projects, including the $40 million of projects that are currently under construction. No Juliana, no projects. So, it about equates to that. She also manages the production of the six-year transportation improvement plans, the most recent one that the council just approved. This is what Juliana's coworkers had to say about her. Juliana is one of the most talented and respected members of the Transportation Division Team. Because of Juliana's numerous skills such as grant writing, project and program coordination, permitting, project estimating, and budgeting, she interacts with numerous staff throughout the city. Her first impressions on new city staff and attested by seasoned city staff are that Juliana is one of the kindest and most helpful individuals they've ever encountered. Juliana is always ready to take on new tasks and strives to learn new skills. Aside from her numerous technical skills and talents, Juliana is considered a trusted friend to many of the city staff throughout the many departments and always stands ready to celebrate and contribute to creating a positive work environment for her coworkers. Okay, so hang right in here. We're gonna have the group photo in the end. Third, from the Utility Systems Division, is Steve Lee. He's the surface water engineer. Steve is also a licensed professional engineer and manages complex water quality, habitat, and surface water facility projects for the city. One of his recent projects, of course, is the infrastructure improvements for the Hawks Landing Project on Lake Washington Boulevard. So, he brought that to successful completion. Steve's coworkers had to say about him, Steve Lee is recommended for the 2012 Employee Recognition Employee of the Year Award for his extensive engineering knowledge, experience, and abilities that he has demonstrated consistently, and his high degree of performance that delivers on a regular basis. Steve consistently manages multiple projects that have high degrees of technical schedule and coordination difficulty, but always has been successful in meeting multiple commitments and project objectives. An example of his ability to successfully complete complex projects that involve multiple parties and difficult schedules is the Lake Washington Boulevard Storm and Water System Improvement Project that was needed to support the redevelopment of the Panabod Site and also the proposed Hawks Landing Hotel. Now, we come to the Public Works Department Good Teamwork Award. And, this is, this award has become a tradition with the department, and one of the features of it that I think is really nice is usually the award has involved teamwork that spans across departments. In this case, we have three departments that have worked on this project, and representatives of the three departments are here with us tonight. So, lending their expertise and making it successful in a way that we couldn't have done just in public work. So, it's really special, these awards that span several departments. In this case, the City Attorney's Office and Community and Economic Development. The Teamwork Award is, we were talking about this just earlier this evening, the Stormwater Facility Transfer Program, in which we're taking over maintenance of surface water utilities that are, systems that are currently being maintained by homeowners associations. There's 213 of them, and we're in the process of taking them over. There's 11 staff members from three departments who participated in moving forward with this program. The staff members, and you can come up as I call your name, Abbe Bernardo from Public Works, Gary Del Rosario from Public Works. Come on forward, we got a plaque for y'all. Don't want to get too far ahead.
Oh, thank you.
You don't have enough hands.
No. So, here's Abbe with the Surface Water Utility.
Thank you.
Gary's with the Surface Water Utility as well. Gary Fink?
Edward Mulburn?
Rich Marshall for Maintenance Services was not able to be here tonight, but he's one of the folks on our list. And here's Edward. Arnie Henninger from Development Services. And Jan Illian from Development Services. Karen Kitchrick, also with Development Services, is, I don't think I saw her tonight, though. Okay, so she was not able to make it. And I don't think Bob McConie from Development Services was able to make it, too, but either, but Mark Barber from the City's Attorney's Office is here. There he is. And Stephanie Rary from the City Attorney's Office. So, this project takes a village, as they say with a different type of program. But these folks have all worked together, and we've got about 151 facilities and counting that are ready to be taken over. We're just doing the paperwork and the deeds of dedication are being signed. So, we're gonna have some homeowners that are very happy to transfer those facilities over to the city, and I think it'll work out better for everybody. And I want to also thank the council for approving this program, because it's a good program. So, at this point, I'd like to get everybody together and we can have a group photo with the council members.
Push them my way a little bit.
Any members of the public that want to come take pictures, feel free.
More than welcome. Come on up. Okay, Jan, can't quite see you behind, great. No hiding. Maybe I'll just have, can I just have you pop over to the other side right there? Yep, perfect, all the way. Yep, yep. There we go. Okay, everybody, big smiles. Any family members near me, too? Good, everybody, good? I'll do one more. Big smile, money shot, right here. Okay, great.
Okay, I'm gonna let you all keep your awards this time. You'll be glad to hear that. And I want to thank you, council members, for giving us the opportunity to present these awards to the deserving recipients, and let's do the same thing this time next year.
Excellent. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and especially the award recipients. Next item is Administrative Report. Mr. Covington?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items. Just wanted to mention that the library meeting, the first library meeting design input that we received in September has been posted on the website along with responses where there were questions asked. A lot of the comments were just that comments, but some were questions, and so, staff has responded to those, and those are on the website now. As we mentioned earlier, those have also been forwarded to King County Library Systems and to the architect, and so, they'll have those to consider as they continue to work on the design of both the Cedar River and Highlands Libraries. And along those lines, the agenda for next Tuesday's meeting, which would be the second meeting for folks to come and participate, will be posted sometime tomorrow on the website. We were still working out some of the details today. So, that should be there for folks, and they'll have an idea of what to expect. We are still very much in the preliminary design phase for the Cedar River Library. The architect is still working on information there, and so, we may not have much to offer there next week, but we will very, most certainly have information available for folks in November. But we'll have an agenda that will have updates for the Cedar River, or excuse me, the Highlands Library, and we'll be able to provide what information we can on the Cedar River Library, and also have folks from KCLS there to receive feedback and forward that on to the architect. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. No one has signed up for audience comments, so the next is Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the council members like pulled for extra consideration?
Seeing none, I move that council concur with this consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer. The council concur in the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Next item is Unfinished Business. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has two committee reports. Finance Committee Report, 2012 Third Quarter Budget Amendment Ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment in the 2012 budget appropriations in the amount of $8,496,583, with the total amended budget to be $540,018,705 for the biennium. The Committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the Committee Chair and Member. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that the council concur in the Finance Committee Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finance Committee Report, Refunding of 2004 Water Sewer Revenue Bonds. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the refinancing plan to issue around $9.35 million in new bonds to refinance approximately $9.015 million of the outstanding 2004 water sewer revenue bonds, and to accelerate the final payment of the 1998 bonds in the amount of $360,000. The Committee further recommends that the attached, that the ordinance with the associated documents be presented for first reading. This is signed by the Committee Chair and Member. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I would just like to comment that Ewan and our Finance Director and her staff have done a wonderful job. This could save the city a million dollars by taking advantage of the low interest rates that we could get now, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that the council concur in the Finance Committee Committee Report. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Breyer?
No, that's all I have.
Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to Resolutions and Ordinances. Looks like we have two resolutions for, or two, excuse me, two ordinances for first reading and one ordinance for second and final.
The first ordinance for first reading regards the Third Quarter Budget Amendment, and ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2011, 2012 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5583 and thereafter amended in the amount of $8,496,583. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Breyer.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Has been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next ordinance for first reading regards the refinancing of the 2004 Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds, and ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the issuance of Water and Sewer Revenue Refunding Bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $10 million for the purpose of refunding a portion of the city's Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds 2004, providing the form, terms, and covenants of the bonds, authorizing the appointment of an escrow agent and execution of an escrow agreement, delegating certain authority to approve the final terms of the bonds, and authorizing the cash redemption of the city's Water and Sewer Refunding Bonds 1998. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Breyer.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Has been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The only ordinance for second and final reading regards the Fire Protection Parks and Transportation Impact Fees Update, and ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41190 of Chapter 1 Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code by repealing Section 4-1-190 and replacing it with the new Section 41190 entitled Impact Fees, authorizing the collection of impact fees for transportation, parks, and fire protection, providing findings and definitions, providing for the time of payment, providing exemptions and credits, providing for the establishment of impact fee accounts, refunds, and the use of funds, providing for reviews and adjustments of impact fees, authorizing independent fee calculations, and setting a fee for appeals.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be adopted as read. It is for second and final reading, therefore requires a roll call.
Mr. Zwicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Roll call, all ayes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next is New Business. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee will meet next Monday, October 15th, from 3:45 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. in the council conference room. We have three items, vouchers, early retirement of the 2002 general obligation bonds, and the third item is emerging issues in revenue streams. That's all I have.
Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this Thursday's Planning Development Committee meeting has been canceled.
Mr. Person?
Yes. Public Safety Committee will meet next Monday at 4:30 p.m. in the council conference room. We have three topics, King County Radio System Replacement Project briefing, it'll be a briefing only, and City of Renton Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, and thirdly, emerging issues in public safety.
Ms. Palmer?
No new business, but I just wanted to bring up an event that Mr. Zwicker and I were at on Saturday, Habitat for Humanity Home Dedication here in Renton, and I believe it's the first Habitat for Humanity project. Six families accepted the keys to their brand-new homes that they built over the last year-plus. And what a snapshot of Renton for diversity. And how touching to hear the stories of these families, of their excitement in being accepted into the program, the 500 hours of labor, and I believe there was at least one single mom, if not two, and the conditions they live in. There were at least two families that had seven people, at least, living in a one-bedroom apartment. I believe it was the last family, single mom, and she had two special-needs sons, and she talked about, and it was a one-bedroom, that lots of problems, including electrical and mold, which was so unhealthy for her kids. So, just, it was a wonderful opportunity to be there. It was actually hot. We were outside in the sun for almost two hours, no complaining, in October. But the City of Renton was a big participant in that, and just want to thank all of council for continuing the support when it looked like the project was about to die about two years ago. And I really appreciated the opportunity, along with Mr. Zwicker, to represent the city. And that's it.
Marcy, appreciate it, Marcy. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a transportation meeting to announce for October 11th, 2012. That date is 10/11/12, I'll point out.
Oh.
Meeting is at 3:45 p.m. in the council conference room. We have two items on that agenda. First is the addendum to AccuWings Lease, and the second item is emerging issues in transportation. And that's all. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Corman. I will go ahead and announce that on Monday, October 15th, beginning at 6 p.m., is the Committee of the Whole here in council chambers, and it will have one topic, and that is the Third Quarter Financial Review and the 2013-2014 Revenue Forecast. And with that, Howard, did you want to get up and say anything to us?
Oh.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday is the Piazza Fall Festival and the Chamber Business Expo downtown. I believe it's 10 to 4, if I remember right.
Yes, it is.
And there's free pumpkin decorating for the kids and lots of candy inside the pavilion that all the businesses and organizations have. So, see ya on Saturday, rain or shine.
Excellent. I heard a motion from Mr. Person to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Breyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
...for our city. We started working with the Seattle International Film Festival and their Future Wave Program, really just to try to tap into the students and the educational element of filmmaking. And it turns out that the relationships we built through their Future Wave Program have turned into significant relationships. So, Renton this year, in just a few weeks, will be one of the venues for the Seattle International Film Festival, and we anticipate several thousand people coming to our city and spending money in our city, really as an outgrowth of a pilot project. If your community has a creative idea or maybe an approach that doesn't seem real traditional, that you should give it a shot, even if it's a pilot project for that first year. See how it goes, and you may be surprised at how successful it can be. Finally, I'd say, to be shameless about promoting your city, we're pretty shameless here, and you know, we have a lot to be proud of. you know, we have a lot to be proud of, and it's fun to showcase it.